The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Will you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you. Clerk Snyder, if you could take the roll, please.
Alderman Isenek, Alderman Savanek, Alderman Perkins, Alderman Lewis is absent, Alderman Marshall, Alderman Grotty, Alderman Repella, Alderman Nichols, Severn are present.
Yeah, Alderman Savanek.
Just so the clerk knows, we did receive communication that Alderman Lewis is on our way.
Yep, thank you very much. And before jumping into things, I just want to say congratulations to Attorney Stroup, who welcomed baby boy into the world last week. We are excited to have the City of Nina attorney here with us this evening, so you're going to notice new face, so welcome. Thank you for being here, and congratulations to Attorney Stroup and her family. To start for the report of department officers, department head staffs, and consultants, we have a presentation this evening. Linda Fink with Trail Strategies of the High Cliff Connection Feasibility Studies here, so we will be getting a wonderful presentation, so I will hand it over to Director Dane.
Just here to, I'm just filling in for Megan Sackett tonight. Wanted to just welcome Linda Fink, who is working on behalf of City Manassia, Village of Harrison, Village of Sherwood, through some generous funding through the Committee Foundation for the Greater Fox Valley Region to help us all kind of move this vision of a trail out to High Cliff from vision to reality. Linda has over two decades' experience working on trails and parks throughout the state of Wisconsin, and she's here to give a little presentation, so welcome, Linda.
Hello, everyone. A presentation will be coming shortly. Just to start though, again, I'm Linda Fink, Trail Strategies. The Community Foundation for the Fox Valley Region funds what I do to help this overall large group in terms of making this project go forward. So with that, I also wanted to note that this presentation was presented to you guys, Village of Harrison and Village of Sherwood. The presentation talks of the project as an overall project, not just the Manassia component. And with that, talk amongst yourselves as technology comes in. All right, and here we go. So the High Cliff Connection, as you can see at bottom of the screen, this is all the different partners from the core team. So just as a quick overview, we have all these partners that have been involved since the master plan. We're now at the feasibility study, and within that feasibility, within these partners, we have a smaller group, we call them Muni Team, which is the two villages in the city and myself, that then talk more nitty-gritty. Next slide. So here's the basics, and I think most of you have probably heard about this because it's been going on for a while, but the idea of the High Cliff Connection is a bike pad route that will go from the trestle all the way to High Cliff State Park. It not only does that east-west route, but it also establishes linkages to the neighborhoods. The connection will tie into the Friendship Trail and planned local trails. There's the core team that I referenced. And next, an overview of the corridor timeline. So it started in 2021 and 2022 with the master plan. After that, in 2022, we all got together and figured, got the momentum, because largely the Community Foundation for the Fox Valley Region also supported a $2 million pledge towards the project. We came up with the initial priority list, then we started with our initial grant applications, went on to the feasibility studies, which I'm going to get into more detail. From the feasibility studies, we're going to be applying for more grants, then we get to design, then we get to construction. So it's a larger project. Here's some of the project highlights to date, so this is stuff that we've already done and is in process or completed. Jefferson Park Trail Rehab, this project actually helped with getting a grant for the trail itself within there, being rehabbed earlier than originally anticipated. We have the two different feasibility studies. We applied for the Old Highway Road Trail Design and Construction Grant, got that, and we will be applying again for the Pigeon Road Existing Trail Rehab with DNR. Next slide. So this is a funding overview to date. I think this is important to reiterate, because we all know this is not going to be just a couple thousand dollars and what we're doing to try to get funds. So originally, the Community Foundation for the Fox Valley Region donated $100,000 for the master plan. They have since pledged $2 million towards the project. Those funds help with the local matching, hire me as the part-time trail coordinator, website, et cetera. They have pledged to match local municipal match at one to two levels. So what that means is for every $200 the city or village puts in, they'll put in 100. They will be covering 100% of the design costs for the State Highway 114 Woodlands West Segment, and just last year secured an additional $210,000 towards the project. Government grants, you guys can see there, that's what we've to date secured. Next. So what I'm going to do now is take you from west to east of the different segments. This segment, which we call the State Highway 114 West, which has subsegments, is the Manassia and Harrison. So Manassia, this is, this is your chunk with Harrison. So we looked at with the feasibility study, both the north and the south side. As you can see through here, the south side had more environmental impacts, had tighter right-of-way, so there'd be more right-of-way needed, or you'd have a minimal offset from the roadway, so safety was a concern. In addition, based on the large ditching, extensive storm sewer improvements were necessary. Extra cost as well on that. So we ended up looking at the various items, going with the north side. It has many more direct connections to existing east and west trails, less property acquisition, less environmental impacts, and a greater roadway offset, which means safer, and lower cost. So we divided into these three segments, the next slide will go into it a little bit more, but, all right, there it is. So the anticipated order of segments is Woodlands West, Conservancy East, Conservancy West. Woodlands West is first, because there is no real estate required. This is the segment that the Community Foundation for the Fox Valley Region has already pledged to fund design at 100%. Then Conservancy East would be next, and then Conservancy West last. You'll know that Conservancy West then ties in with the Province Terrace Trail as well. Anticipated cost for all these segments would be $4.866 million. Now, to point with all the estimates that you see throughout these presentations, that includes inflation, includes real estate design and construction cost. So you're not just looking at these numbers as nowadays, and oh my gosh, in five years it's going to be even more. These are including inflation based on the timeline we've put forward. Next slide. Okay, so now this segment is State Highway 114 East, and at the very end, I'll show an overall again. So this will be Harrison. We looked at the west side of the road, and looked both within and outside right-of-way. So the reason just on the west side was because of the existing trail connections on either side, in terms of Old Highway Road, and then it's going to ultimately come to Pigeon Road as well. We ended up going behind the right-of-way, because to stay within the right-of-way, we would have had extensive storm sewer again, and with that, with being behind the right-of-way, we are maintaining existing ditches much safer, but it does have greater property acquisition. Next slide. So this does have extensive real estate needed. What I mean by extensive is that it will require real estate from all parcels, not saying that we're buying entire parcels, this will be strip takings, anywhere from 10 to 15 feet behind typically the existing right-of-way. Next slide. All right, so then these are the last quote-unquote segments of the local roads. This talks to Manitowoc Road, Old Highway Road, and Pigeon Road. So Old Highway Road, if anyone's familiar with that area, you'll know currently it has two bike lanes and then the road itself. So this project has already been approved for a design and construction grant by the DOT, and what the concept is, is basically removing the bike, the two bike lanes, which people currently use as sidewalks, and then shoving it, I think, two feet closer to the highway, and then having an off-road trail then on the opposite side. So that's the south side. Pigeon Road, okay, sorry, we looked at the west side of the road as well. The reason we did west side was because that's then extending the existing trail. We looked at within right-of-way and behind right-of-way. Unfortunately, within right-of-way, if you're familiar with that area, the right-of-way is extremely tight, so you'd be looking at maybe a two-foot offset from the road, which nobody wants. So we are then looking at building it behind the existing large ditches as well, which will then require some real estate. Next slide. So here's the summary of the local roads one. Now, you heard me say Manitowoc Road before, and the original feasibility study, we did look at that. However, what was determined was based on the fact that that, the development of that area in reality would require redevelopment, is eventually going to be redevelopment with the local roads, and having multiple municipalities made it that that's kind of outside this scope. So that is just, in the future, please consider bike pad. So the Old Highway Road, I've kind of gone through already, that one has funding, will be applying for some DNR funding as well, Pigeon Road Trail Extension then, and then estimated cost for both, $3.2 million. And next slide. So with all that, the project process is as shown here. First strip back, property acquisition if needed, then we secure funding, then we design, then we construct. So based on all those different elements, what you see on the bottom then is the timeline we're anticipating for construction. So Old Highway, 2027, Woodlands West, 2029, 2030, et cetera, et cetera. Now, you're, so in essence, this is 10 years. 10 years from now for it to be constructed if all the stars align. Now, you may ask yourself, why so much in between? Well, typically, your grant funding, a lot of times, specifically if you look to DOT, where it's 80% federal, 20% local, you would apply, a year later you find out if you win it or not, and then two to three years later is when you can actually construct it. So this timeline takes into account grant cycles. And again, this is a timeline assuming all the stars align, if funding is there, if real estate all aligns as we're looking at, et cetera, et cetera. So overall, $9.861 million for the proposed six segments. Again, this includes real estate design, construction, and inflation. Next slide. So now you're wondering, holy cow, with all of that, what are you going to even do this year? So right now, we're presenting the feasibility studies, you guys, we've already presented to the two villages. Then we start the design of State Highway 114 Woodlands West Segment and Old Highway Road Trail. Then we're also developing grant applications, DNR for Old Highway Road Trail, potentially DOT redistribution, Pigeon Road Trail, the existing DNR, and then DOT TAP for the others. So four different grant applications, and then we will be exploring acquisition opportunities. Next slide. So then you're questioning with all this, how do I stay connected to the project, right? That was going through your heads? Thank you for the smile, I appreciate it. So we do have a website, highcliffconnection.org. You can sign up for updates there, follow our partners, including the City of Manassia on social media, and there's an annual newsletter that comes out, which I'm pretty sure you guys have gotten annually as well. Next slide. So this slide, I'm just showing from the standpoint of the full connection. The star to the star is the trestle to the High Cliff, and then you see the cute little pink bikers there. Those, the biker to the biker is the area that the feasibility study covers. So there are areas in between that are already built, so this is just looking at the overall corridor. Next slide. And that is what I had, so I would welcome any questions at this point. And I would like to point out, in the audience, we have the Community Foundation for the Fox Valley Region, and we have multiple members of Fox City Greenways as well.
Thank you, and thank you all for attending this evening. Is there any questions? Yes, Alderman Savanek.
You mentioned a website, and you just said highwayconnectionsplural.com or what?
Can you go back to the highcliffconnection.org?
High Cliff Connection, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I guess one last thing. I know later on in the agenda is the, is it resolution or ordinance? Resolution. And what that is, is for support of the feasibility study, and then also to allow for applying for grants in the future. And that's similar to what the other villages have done as well, so that's giving the authority to apply for the grants as well.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you for everybody coming this evening. And with that, we'll move on to item two under Report of Department Officers, Department Head Staff and Consultants. So I would entertain a motion for the Minutes and Communications. Alderman Savanek.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through H and Communications I through M.
Motion was made by Alderman Savanek, seconded by Alderman Grotty. Is there any discussion? Alderman Savanek.
Going to put the city clerk on the spot here. Wonder if you could give us an update on the technology upgrades and what we are expecting in the next weeks to come.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So if you remember, back this past fall, the Common Council approved two different technology methods to continue moving our meetings in this method. We have new microphone systems, which will allow us to speak and be on camera, and have that audiovisual tracking, and then we additionally have a software system that allows voting. There is a board portal, so that you can see the packets more clearly. And because those are two separate forms of technology through two separate companies, we can't exactly align them on launch, so we will be implementing those microphones at the end of this month, which means we'll be debuting them at the April 7th meeting, and the rest of the software, the voting piece, will come in on April 21st. So we'll have a couple weeks in April where it's a little bit uncomfortable, and we'll be doing voice votes and getting through that learning curve together, but we're excited to be taking the next step there.
And it's not like we're not used to having that, those technical issues, so that's why we're doing this. Also, as the council remembered, I asked for an update on the historic library plaques. The library plaques have been located, and they're in good shape, and I'm okay with for them being placed in that historic room. So if the school board decides to do that, I think that's okay. I just want the rest of the members to, you know, know unless you feel uncomfortable about that. I think it's a good idea, because, you know, it's related to history. And if they do it right, then maybe that room will be something that our community can visit from time to time.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Alderman Grotty.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to point out for Communications J and K, the two annual reports from 2024, I thought were put together very, very well, and I give credit, I see our director from the health is here, Kristi Hooper, I thank you, Hunter, and I just thought it was really, really special, and it should be noted that those are really nice reports.
Thank you, Alderman Grotty. Thank you, staff, for all of your work. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to F, public comment on any matter of concern to the city. Would just ask that you step up to the podium, say your first and last name, address, and you have five minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak this evening?
I'll go first, since everyone else is shy. I'm just, as a member of the public and a member of Fox City's Greenways, I'm here to support the project for the High Cliff Connection tonight. I think it's great that we're kind of a leader in the outdoor recreation area, puts us at the center point of these biking and recreation facilities, and makes Manassia a desirable place to live, and helps us with economic development. 163 Main Street, sorry.
Who are you? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hammond. City council members, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Dennis Kittle. I live at 410 Craft Street in Nina. I am president of Fox City's Greenways, and if you're not aware of Fox City's Greenways, we're a local nonprofit funded by memberships and donations. We're celebrating our 30th year. Our mission is fostering the development of trails and green spaces in the Fox City's regions. We speak favorably about the High Cliff Connection feasibility. We're looking forward to this. We think this is a very positive advancement for trails in the area. We're excited about the connection with Friendship Trail, and just a fantastic asset for the City of Manassia and also the Fox City's region. Clean Family Fund, you can ride your bike in a little more than an hour to High Cliff State Park, have an adventure. Like I said, it's Clean Family Fund, it's healthy activity, it's just something we need to get outdoors, and trails are one way to do that. And so again, Fox City's Greenways and its members all would like to encourage the yes on this feasibility study, and continue, continue the development of the High Cliff Connection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eli Wickman, 710th Street. I would like to take this time to promote something that I've been working on for the better part of six months now. I've sent emails, arranged meetings, spent hours out of time researching, and I'm excited to invite all of Manassia to Hart Park for my program that I am putting on through the Parks and Recreation Department, Roll for Adventure. Roll for Adventure is a program where I will host a game for up to eight people aged 13 and up to play Dungeons and Dragons with me. Now, this is where I'm going to extol the virtues of Dungeons and Dragons. I'm not stuck here with you, you're stuck here with me. Dungeons and Dragons is a role-playing fantasy adventure game, where players quest through challenges set up by me to become heroes and save the day. I've worked with several organizations and businesses, such as the Elijah D. Smith Public Library, Catchfire Creations, Blue Dragon Skate Shop, The Sweet Lair, Chimera Hobby Shop, and the Parks and Recreation Department to create a fantasy version of Manassia that we get to save. If you are interested in playing, sign up on Rec Desk through the Parks and Recreation Department to reserve a spot. If you are curious about anything, or just kind of want to see how this all plays out, you are welcome to join us at the Hart Park Shelter and just kind of watch, see how it goes. An audience is always welcome. My goal is to curb the unsavory behavior at Hart Park during the spring and summer months by having a healthy amount of adult presence and encourage the youth to engage in a hobby that promotes critical thinking skills, teamwork, imagination, literacy skills, math skills, and deep friendships. Personally speaking, as an early teen who had too much energy, not enough guidance, and a reading disability, Dungeons and Dragons was the perfect hobby for me. I mean, it got me to read books like this and dozens more of them voluntarily, and I can encourage pretty much anyone who plays to do the same. The, the very nature of D and D teaches you leadership skills and confidence that few hobbies are able to do. So please, I encourage you to sign up for Roll for Adventure on the Parks and Recreation website and play in a citywide Manassia-based adventure. Thank you.
Thank you, and happy reading. Is there anybody else this evening that would wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Alderman Savanek.
I'd like for us to take each individually. With that, I will, if that's all right with you?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I will move that we approve the Common Council Minutes of three, three of 25.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, motion made by Alderman Savanek, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have the roll, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Next is item two, an exciting one, firework contract from the Administration Committee. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the 2025 through 2026 contract with Spielbauer Fireworks for $40,000 each year contingent upon receipt of certificate of insurance.
Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Alderman Savanek.
I've never seen us break it down to each little sparkler.
Transparency and nice to know all the hard work that goes into it on the firework company's end. Seeing no other discussion, if we could have the roll, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, item three is from the Board of Public Works, and it is a change order. Is there a motion? Alderman Savanek.
Thank you. The board met last two weeks ago, and we'd like to approve a change order to Cardinal Construction. This is Contract Unit 2024-10, Jefferson Park Shelter. This is an addition of $16,780.52. This will be the second change order.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Savanek, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have the roll, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is from the Personnel Committee. Is there a motion? One second here. All right, Alderman Grotty.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, I'd like to move to approve the recommended changes to the Employee Safety Manual, the Fall Protection Policy, and the Injury Reporting Form.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Alderman Grotty, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have the roll, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
We'll move down to I, which is action items, and the first is accounts payable. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of February 28th through March 13th, 2025, in the amount of $3,7287.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have the roll, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is alcohol operators license applications. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I'd like to first ask if Mr. DeJesus is in attendance this evening.
Are you, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to give him an opportunity, if he was here. I will move to deny the alcohol operators license application submitted by Hector DeJesus for the 2023 through 2025 licensing term, based on the recommendation from the city clerk's office, and made in consultation with the Manassia Police Department.
Is there a second? All right, motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Marshall. Is there any discussion? See, oh, Alderman Isenek.
Thank you. I would like to abstain from voting, please, since I hold a current liquor license.
Okay, thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? You're abstaining? Oh, okay, just making sure. If there's no further discussion, if we could have the roll, please. Thank you. Alderman Savanek.
Okay, so here's my position, and I, I do this because I'll be leaving and... So here's my position, and I, I do this because I'll be leaving, and most of you, in some cases, is new. We, we set up rules and standards, and then the police department looks at those, and they give us guidance. This doesn't mean because they said we shouldn't approve, which they're not doing, they're just saying it's not according to our rules. We act as a quasi-judicial judge in these situations, and each one is unique and different. I look at this one, and I could potentially approve it only because it has been some time, maybe when he was younger or something, he, I mean, it. But when you don't come to the meeting to appeal your situation, I have no reason to support that, so I will be voting no. But just in the future, and I'm speaking kind of to guys in the gallery, these are guidelines for you. So, and the situations are always different. For instance, whether they're going to be using this liquor license, or this bartender's license, or this alcohol license, excuse me, for, at a bar, or at a quick trip, there's a difference to me. They're not serving necessarily alcohol, they're selling. And, and in some of those cases, we've approved those because maybe it was 10 years ago when maybe they got a disorderly conduct. Usually, if there's a felony involved, then we have questions, and I believe there was a felony, but it was some time ago. So you have to basically make, don't think that just because the recommendation came from the police, they're just doing their job following our guidelines, and I just want to be able to make sure everyone understands that.
Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, if we could have the roll, please.
Motion carries six one, one abstention.
Thank you, clerk. Next, we'll move on to K, which is Ordinances and Resolutions, and the first one is R-5-25. Yes, Alderman Sevigny.
I think Alderman Perkins indicated to me that she feels that she hit the wrong button, and if I could ask for unanimous consent that we allow for her vote to be a positive one, she got it switched around.
Alderman Perkins.
I told you guys that I was off today.
Thank you, Alderman Sevigny. Alderman Perkins, is that, is that how you wish to have recorded for the record?
Yes.
Clerk will take note of that, thank you. We'll move on to K, Ordinances and Resolutions. The first one is Resolution 5-25. Is there a motion? Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion for R-525, a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers for street improvements to the third edition of Woodland Hills under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes introduced by Alderman Repella. Is there a second?
Is there a second? All right. Motion was made by Alderman Repella, seconded by Alderman Sevigny. Is there any discussion? Alderman Repella?
Nope.
All right, seeing none, if we could have the roll, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is Resolution 725. Is there a motion? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve R-725, a resolution approving the High Cliff Connection feasibility study and authorizing the application of grant funding for the implementation of the High Cliff Connection introduced by Alderman Grady.
Motion was made by Alderman Grady, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have the roll, please. If you could vote again, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right. Yes, Alderman Sevigny.
Move on to R-925. I'd ask for unanimous consent to hear from our Finance Director if she could put this in a nutshell for us. This is a annual thing, but I want it to be explained.
Director Sassen. Thank you. This is a resolution that we bring forward every year about this time prior to closing our books. So it allows us to do three things. Cancel any outstanding checks usually of smaller nature that are over a year old, and then two, write off any receivables beyond that seven-year mark. There are a number of receivables for accident damage. Those will still remain with the tax refund intercept program. Should we get payment for those in the future, we'll just write them off our books, and then we would obviously still take that. And then the also, the other piece to that is any account, our personal property that is beyond that threshold as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there, well, is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I'll move for the approval of R-925, a resolution to approve the cancellation of outstanding checks and the write-off of general uncollectible accounts receivables and delinquent personal property tax receivables.
Is there a second? All right. Motion was made by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have the roll, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, clerk. Next is L, Appointments. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Mayor, I'm going to do this a little different. I'm going to move for your, your appointments to the Racine Street Main and Racine Street Roundabout Landscape Special Committee. The term will be 3/18/25, and you can list the names.
All right. The names are Robert Gueranger, Craig Sotowski, Alderman Ted Grady, and Ann Anderson.
And we'll need a second.
All right. Motion was made by Alderman Sevigny, seconded by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? I have to ask this, so, yeah, Alderman Sevigny.
I'm kind of out of order here for, I should have done it earlier, but wasn't there room for one more person?
Yes, I'm just trying to decide.
Trying to work on it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. All right. Next is N, which would be Public Comments on any matter listed on this agenda specifically. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Repella.
Yes, Austin. I see where it says the term of 3/18/25, and then when does that committee end, or is it just?
Completion of the Racine Street Main Street Roundabout and Racine Street End Up Street Roundabout Landscape projects.
So we didn't set a date, like we couldn't, I didn't know if you'd set a date, like within two years or something?
Within the resolution, it is when it's voted upon by this governing body to approve those designs that that govern, or excuse me, that temporary committee would no longer exist.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, I didn't see your light.
That's okay, I turned it on late.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to N, Public Comments on any matter listed on this agenda. As before, just state your first and last name and address, and you have five minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak in anything on this agenda this evening? All right, seeing none. All that would be left is items for next meeting agenda, or I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Sevigny.
This again is for the candidates. You should have been receiving a packet, so next time around, you will be receiving the same information that we receive. So there was a switching of the clerks, and that wasn't understood, and although I know that most of you went to the websites and looked at things, but in the future, our next couple meetings, you will receive exactly what all of us receive.
And just add a clarification, a couple clerks ago, that was a common practice, and Alderman Sevigny brought up the suggestion, so nothing was done wrong, but that will be something to keep an eye out on your email.
Yep. So look for it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we adjourned at 6:41. Thanks, everybody. And Happy St. Patrick's Day, and thank you for being here.
The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manassiawi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608. Contacting their city alderman, contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.